Hi, I'd like to welcome everyone to my opinion piece for September 14th, 2020 Board of Supervisors Meeting. Uh, this is a little bit late, but uh, better late than never. Never. I had to do some research before I did my opinion this time. So there weren't a lot of things going on at this meeting, but there were two, one extremely important issue and then one secondary important issue that I want to bring to your attention. Uh, the board as usual in its nearsightedness are doing things that that simply do not make sense. Uh, for example, well, the major topic of this meeting was refinancing and the way they went about telling us this, as you'll see in the video of the meeting, that someone came to them and suggested that they look at refinancing. So we're not told who that someone is. We're not told why they felt that we should be refinancing these particular bonds. These bonds are 2015 A bonds and uh, they, they were issued in 2015. They were issued to refinance the running country club debt. I mean, this is the third or fourth time now we're going to refinance this debt. The uh, the interest rates on these bonds are point five, five to like three point five percent. I don't think we're going to get better interest rates. The school district just refinanced their bonds and they allowed up to over, I think five percent or more on their bonds. So I think their excuse here is that they expect to have a, a large balloon payment sometime in the future. And if that's the case, we should have had a sinking fund, putting money away to meet that obligation. But these guys are not financial geniuses. Spees is a chemist and you watch him in the meetings. He's, he's not even there half the time. Casadis is an expediter. Uh, Gaultier is a principal. Michelle is a, is an administrative type of person and the only one that has any experience with mortgages is, is Mr. Staub, but that's with home mortgages. He's not a bond expert. And I think it's a mistake refinancing these bonds, but if you're interested in seeing how we're being taken to the, uh, taken for all of our monies, uh, just watch and see that they'll refinance this and will probably have a higher interest rate, which makes absolutely no sense to me. Uh, I've worked in treasury in large corporations. I know how to deal with these things. I've taken the time to evaluate it and from the information that I've been able to glean, uh, from the 2018 audited financial statements, because that's the place where the 2015 A bonds have information. The initial uh, bonds were issued at a little bit over nine point seven million dollars. And again, I said point five, five to like three point five or so interest rate. So it's still a very good interest rate. Simply doesn't make any sense. So we paid off five, five years of this and they want to refinance. And I wouldn't be surprised if they refinance for more money than what they need to. Uh, I think this is a an attempt to put more money in the bank so that they have more money to, to waste, to spend on their contractors that are going to do the work on the provenance. This is all an effort to shift taxpayer money from our pockets to their friends' pockets. And remember, we sold a sewer plant that kept our sewer rates low. It wasn't necessary to sell it. They provided this false narrative to the public. So we basically sold our sewer plant, our sewer plant that actually provided a benefit to every resident here, over 10,000 homes. And we're going to take, uh, we got rid of that benefit and what are they going to do? They're going to spend all this money to build buildings to house our government, which doesn't really give us that much. We have a perfectly good situation right now. My plan is to turn the current buildings over to the police department. With cheap leasing space, we can lease space and move administration and engineering to another site. We've got five years to develop our plans for a new fire station and that's what we should be doing. But we're going to end up spending, if not close to over forty million dollars to develop that provenance by the time these bozos are through doing it. They've already handed out the architectural part to KCBA, which is affiliated with John Granger and also with Simone Collins. And they've been sucking our taxpayer money out for years now. But if you don't wake up folks, you're going to be complaining about all of this, just like you now are complaining about the sewer rates. Trying to give you a heads up. I'm no longer getting so excited about it like I used to because I see that the community simply isn't standing up for its own rights. You've given these five people the responsibility to do the proper things for our community, but that's not what's happening. They have their own agenda and behind the scenes they're working in efforts to uh, put money in other people's pockets. Somehow I think it's coming around to benefit them. We know that a former supervisor hasn't paid some of her taxes in the 10 years or so that she's lived in the community. We know a former supervisor who got a part of his yard paved by Penn Dot for free. You know, all these little uh, things that are being done for these supervisors and they get away with it. And the Pennsylvania state government is designed that way. I've done all kinds of things to try to uh, expose them and it's, it's like no one cares. So if you don't care, you're, we're going to be taken for a lot of money and I guarantee you that your taxes are going to go up. So watch the refinancing situation. I say it's not necessary to do it. Uh, it's premature and our interest rates on these bonds are just fine. And if we do have a balloon payment, we have the money. We could create a sinking fund very simply. And when it's time to pay off the balloon, the money will be there. The other thing I'd like to talk about, not real important, but it's just an indication of how sad our government is. Uh, I pointed out in the last meeting that the golf report where they're telling us the golf courses making all this money is simply untrue. They, they've, they continue to evade and ignore other expenses related to the running country club. And they've completely ignored the main building, not even preparing it for when we can eventually have food and beverages in there. So they're not doing their job and yet they want to go take on other projects. We've got a country club that had, is in disrepair. They claim that the sewer plant was in disrepair and so if you look at our parks, we got tennis courts where weeds are growing out of the tennis, tennis courts are not being maintained and now they want to build more stuff uh, because it's fun to do, I guess. But those things will fall into disrepair as well. So uh, the golf report is misleading. It's not correct. It's a bunch of hooey. Don't believe it. And the right to know report doesn't tell us what we expected to do. They can say what they want about it, but I know for a fact I have requests that are pending with the Office of Open Records and they don't report them. So they're not as efficient as they want, as they claim to be. It's all another game of charades here and uh, smoke and mirrors. Now, the first big thing I talked about was refinancing. That's, that's the number one issue that you want to take from this meeting. The second one is zoning. There's several zoning ordinances that uh, they, uh, the zoning board came to the board and asked them to uh, uh, make a decision on, and they basically gave it up. They said, oh, we're not going to second guess the zoning board. Uh, you know, whatever you guys decide is okay with us. Well, that's not their job. They're supposed to make a ruling on that. They're responsible for making the rules and regulations and ordinances in this township. Now, uh, giving a variance for zoning should be, I would think, a very rare thing. The zoning ordinances are there for a reason. Yet we give variances like handing out M and Ms., you know, and I think that creates a precedent when they do that. So there are five things that have to be addressed, five criteria that have to be met in order to uh, give a variance to an or, to a zoning ordinance. These board supervisors, I'm sure they don't know what those five items are. They never asked a question on any of them. They just said, oh, if you say so, we're going to do it. The problem with this, and I want you to note this for future reference, is that they're setting everything up for the uh, the bus, the mega, the garage, the hall, because it was in the paper where the architect uh, said that he thinks he's got a zoning board that's more favorable to what they want to do. They're going to build that garage, the hall right where it is. We know that uh, Joe Staub, Casadis, they're, they're big in with the school district. Uh, Gaultier will go anywhere that Joe tells him to go. And Spees is, you know, he's, he's a whip wrist. He'll go wherever they tell him to go as well. So you could guarantee that the zoning board will uh, this year or next year authorize the garage ball hall, you know, give them a variance for that and the board will do nothing after spending all the money in the past to defeat the uh, building of the garage ball hall. I think it's a unnecessary cost. It's ridiculous. Uh, from what I've heard them say, the old one needs a roof and that's about it. We could save millions of dollars by doing that. And eventually they'll come to realize that it's more beneficial to uh, contract out these services. But everybody likes their own kingdom and whoever kingdom has the buses in the garage ball hall still wants to be king. Uh, so, but you can see, if you read the responsibilities of a second class township supervisor, they're supposed to be looking at these zoning variances and determining if, if it's appropriate or not. But they've uh, basically uh, sidestepped their responsibilities. Watch the video of the meeting and you'll see what I mean. Uh, they've been still dragging their feet on service electric contract. All they have to do is sign it. They're not going to change anything. They paid a lawyer to review it. I've read the whole thing. It's not, it's not that much different than the old one, but what is differences, there are no new revenue streams. So we're losing money. Even Spees mumbled about we could be losing money. Well, we are losing money. So why are they not signing the contract so that we get this revenue? And if they are going to sign a contract, they should make sure that it's retroactive. Retroactive. So we do get those revenues that so far we've been missing. You know, this is a terrible thing, folks. I mean, this is total neglect, negligence, malfeasance even, for these guys to not have taken care of this immediately. They held a special meeting at the library to talk about it. And yet a year later, they haven't done one thing about it. So, but I don't know, the community doesn't seem to care. So why should I care? Well, I care less than I used to, but I'm reporting this information to you. Maybe there's someone out there who will join with me and ask these supervisors, what in the world are they doing? Because they're not telling us any of their plans. It's like hit and miss. They do this, they do that. They want to build a wharf down at the river, which is, and buy some more properties down there. All they want to do is spend our money while our budget is blown because of COVID. They keep spending. Also, note that the Reading Public Library has opened up, but our library hasn't opened up. The communities around us are now holding their supervisor meetings open to the public. Amity has been doing it for a long time. There are some other ones that are now opening up. You know, we only have 16 to 20 people watching these videos. They're going to use excuses like their audio is an issue. Well, their job is to identify problems and solve them. But that's not what this board does, nor did the last board, as evidence of two years before they could eventually adopt a noise ordinance. Uh, two, two years before they could adopt anything related to these uh, uh, running out the homes. So it gets worse and worse as, as time goes on. Uh, also, where is the audited financial statements for 2019? I had to look at the 2018 statements to get my information about the bonds that they want to refinance. But normally the, it's required by within 90 days after the end of the year to have financially audited statements of the previous year. So these are due no later than April 1st. We have a finance director that has no experience, basically learning on the job and uh, it's killing us. She's destroying the financial stability of our township. So no audited financial statements, nothing published in the paper. It's a requirement. If they went in and looked what the responsibilities are, according, I think it's Act 69, uh, they're supposed to providing us with information. We're fighting tooth and nail with the township every time we submit a right to know request. Uh, they're just playing with us. And uh, I don't know if you're going to wake up. I, I hope you do. Uh, we'll see what happens. These are my quick and fast comments on the September 14th, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting. Uh, I hope that it wakes you up. Perhaps you'll look deeper into this, ask questions. Uh, these are my opinions and uh, I hope you'll form, form your own opinions. Those of you that agree with me, please join me at exeterunited.com and also at my YouTube channel and watch my opinions on, on the previous uh, meetings as well. Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay, we're live.
Thanks, Laura. I'd like to call the order. The Monday, September 14th, 2020 Meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Please rise for the pledge to fly. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States and to one nation under God, indivisible, earthy, and justice. Go call Mr. Gaultier.
Here.
Mr. Staub.
Here.
Ms. Kurtzer.
Here.
Mr. Casadis.
Here.
And I'm here, Dave Spees. Uh, we're going to start off tonight with a presentation about a potential opportunity of refinancing some bonds to save some money for the township. This was brought to our attention. Um, Jeff, you have any comments before we start with that?
No, um, I believe this process was brought, brought up before I started with the township. And um, uh, at the time it, it was determined that we could not be refunding those bonds at that time. Uh, but the time is coming due that we may be able to. And uh, we're hoping that we can get some good advice on this and uh, potentially save um, several hundred thousand dollars in the process.
Great.
Okay, and we've got Mark Stein from Eckert Siemens. Mark, you're good to go if you're ready.
I'm ready. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to be before you again. I'm Mark Stein. I'm from Eckert Siemens and we have been Bon Castle to the township for a number of years. There are two series of debt obligations that are subject to being refunded by the township. They are the 2015 A bonds and your 2018 notes. Um, the idea of doing a refunding for those who have not been involved is very similar to when you refinance your mortgage, when you go from a, a higher interest rate to a lower interest rate and then have lower debt service payments on your mortgage. It's the same idea with doing a refinancing on bond issues or a note issues by a township or other municipal entity. The refundings should, should provide savings to the township, but that's based upon market conditions at the time that the bonds or the obligations are, are being issued. And what we had recommended to the township was that it would enact a parameters ordinance, which would be an ordinance which would authorize the refunding of the two debt obligations that I just discussed on not to exceed basis. So the, the numbers will be a little bit more inflated on a not to exceed basis, both for the principal amounts, the amounts due each year and the interest rates. This will give the financial advisors and the investment banking firms the ability to size the deals and, and provide the township with the kind of a financing that most benefits the township. And you have to inflate the numbers a little bit in order to allow them the room they need to do this. And then when the deals are, are issued, when the bonds are issued, the notes are issued, we will then make an appropriate filing with the Department of Community and Economic Development in Harrisburg in order to let them know the actual amount that, of debt that was issued by the township. The way this would work would be that in, uh, assuming we move forward, an ordinance would be enacted in October at one of your two meetings and we would try to close the first deal to refund the 2015 A bonds prior to the end of calendar year 2020 for federal tax law purposes. There are certain benefits to the township to do that this year. And then we would issue another series of debt obligation in early 2021 in order to do the refunding of the 2018 note. And once again, that will, uh, the, the tax benefits that I just discussed will also in order to benefit of the township. Um, the way it would work is the ordinance would be enacted. There would be a filing made as required by state law in Harrisburg. In the meantime, your investment banking firm and your financial advisory firm would be able to uh, put together a disclosure document known as an official statement or preliminary official statement in order to uh, market the bonds to potential investors. And at the same time, there will probably be a series of uh, conversations with rating agencies to have the township's debt rated so that uh, that will help the sale of the bonds. Once all that's put together, they would go into the market. Uh, and then we could close shortly thereafter. Um, once we receive, receive uh, the approval of the Department of Community and Economic Development. That same approval will govern the 2021 bonds. So we don't have to go through debt act proceedings twice. You don't only have to do it once, but there would be a, a requirement that we'd have to do a new disclosure document, just really a, a bring down of what was done for the 2020 obligations. And then we would close in, probably in the first quarter of 2021 as well. That was pretty quick and I can answer any questions that anybody may have to try to, you know, fill in some of the, uh, some of the questions you may have, to answer some of the questions you may have.
Yeah, Mark, this is Dave Spees. I mean, do we have an idea or is that to be, to be determined what the net cost or savings would be?
I don't, I can't give you that, uh, that answer right now. One, I'm a lawyer, not an investment banker or a financial advisor. Uh, but that will change and, and from time to time. I know that the financial advisors that um, you'll be talking to later this evening, uh, may be able to give you a ballpark and it's a ballpark only because it's good as of today, September 14th. That may very well change by the time the township goes into the market in November. But that being said, you could set a minimum savings that you want as a township for either series of the debt. Usually it's done on a percentage basis. So you, the financial advisor would once again work with the township in order to set that at a savings threshold in an amount which would be, which will work for the township. You don't want to set it too high and then you never get there and you don't want to set it too low and then you leave savings on the table when you could have waited a little bit and, and picked up those savings down the road.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Any other questions for Mark? Okay.
Thank you.
And we've also got, uh, we've got Melissa on from PFM. Melissa, I'm just going to turn your camera on. So there's just going to be a slight delay. Hey, you should be good now. And I will put up here. And you can start whenever you're ready.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for giving us the opportunity to talk to the township. So as Lori said, my name is Melissa Hughes and I work at PFM Financial Advisors. Um, we always work together in teams. So the members of the team that would serve the township would be Jamie Schlesinger. He'd be your day-to-day contact. He'd be the project manager, myself, and then Garrett Moore. And we really emphasize at PFM the team approach so that there is somebody that's always available um, for the township whenever you have questions or, you know, meetings. It is a very busy night tonight. Uh, Jamie had six meetings, so I happen to be um, covering the township. And, and that works out well because um, you know, historically, um, prior to the 2018 transaction, Jamie and I actually worked with the township on some of the um, earlier issues like the 2015 and 2016 deal. And Jamie worked with the township, um, you know, long before that too. So we have some familiarity. Um, I've been to your building many times and eaten at the Chick-fil-A there. So you, you all know what a, what a financial advisor is. You know, our job is we have a fiduciary duty to the issuer. Unlike the investment bankers, right? We need them too. They're absolutely a critical component of getting a transaction done. We need somebody to go find the investors, but our job is to advocate on your behalf and make sure you understand the decisions that you're making and make sure that you get, um, you know, a market deal when it comes right down to it. You all might have a sense of generally where interest rates are, but you probably don't have a great sense of what the 2032 interest rate should be. Um, and we have the types of data that helps us advocate on behalf of the township when it gets really nitty gritty like that. If you could scroll down just a little bit, Lori? Yep. Thanks. So the bottom of the page just shows um, how many transactions we've done um, in, in 2019. And I can tell you how many we've done in 2020 so far also. So you can see there at the top, um, on the left-hand side, that compares PFM to other financial advisors. We did 227 transactions in Pennsylvania last year. I did 81 of those. Um, so we're very, very active um, in the market and that gives us a lot of perspective on knowing how, how things kind of should look and give, helps you put yourself in context with your peers, both um, you know, kind of close to you, geographically close to you, and then your peers kind of statewide, thinking about how you, your credit rating compared to folks with the same credit rating in Pittsburgh or, you know, closer down in towards Philly, up towards the Scranton area. On the other side of the page, it compares PFM to underwriters. So the, you probably haven't heard a lot of the financial advisory firms, but the underwriters might be some names you recognize, um, RBC, Bank of America. And you can see, even compared to them, we still do a very large number of transactions. And ultimately that only inures to your benefit. If you could scroll down a little bit. Thanks. So I talked a little bit about how um, we care both about, you know, or you might care both about your local peers and your peers around the state. So this is just an example of some people in the general area that our firm has worked with. Um, you know, one, one interesting transaction that I'll pick out and talk about is Skip Act Township. That's a deal that Jamie and I That's a deal that Jamie and I did together late last year, and that was a bond issue. It was the first bond issue that they ever did. And we put a lot of work into advocating on the township's behalf for the credit rating. And they got a triple A. They're the smallest triple A rated issuer in the country. So that was kind of cool. A different kind of interesting transaction that we worked on was Adelani Township. They issued, we were all teed up and ready to go with the sale right as the coronavirus hit, you know, kind of. Everything was good in the market until the week of March 13th, and then the market totally fell apart. And we were supposed to price bonds the next week. So we, you know, stayed in good communication with the township and said, hey, let's hold off, let's be patient. You know, sometimes patience is the best path forward. So let's be patient. We waited and stayed in lots of, had lots and lots of phone calls with the township and that working group and ultimately, you know, brought bonds to market in late May. And they saved about $700,000. And that was a case where, you know, we were able to provide timely market advice because we were observing what was happening on a day-to-day basis. And, you know, once the market started to thaw and we started to see good data coming out again, they were able to, you know, move and execute and they had ultimately really good results. And I think that that's an interesting transaction, you know, for a variety of reasons because it talks about how you think patience can be a good thing sometimes, you know, that you don't have to rush out. We'll rush if we need to rush. But all, but also that, you know, that's not always what produces the best result. And, you know, it was steering the client through a time of frankly, extreme volatility. Now luckily, knock on some wood, things have been much calmer now, but, you know, as you're considering doing a transaction here in the last quarter of this year, one thing we'll be monitoring very closely is any impacts the election has on the general markets. So that would be something that we would be keeping in very strong communication with you all about. As we plan the transactions, because like Mark said, we do envision that there would probably be two transactions. Some of the things that we will think about in conjunction with bond counsel and in conjunction with you, kind of the decision points would be timing. You know, we generally think that one yet this year and one early next year is the way to go, but confirming that. And, you know, exact timing matters, right? You know, do you go the week of November 30th or do you price the first week of December? You know, those kind of exact details. We'll have conversations with Mark about the tax status. I'm sure he's already given thoughts to that, but, you know, we'll want his official opinion because his is the one that matters. We'll want to take into consideration, what does the amortization or what does the payback look like of the new debt? And how does that fit into the useful, useful life of the assets that you originally financed? That'll be analysis that we would work together with Mark on. We would want to think, anytime you do a refinancing, is the time to think about, you know, is there any cash that you'd want to contribute towards the refunding? So that's something we would have conversations about. You know, your debt as is structured currently, you have a little bit of a balloon because, you know, when you paid things off after the sewer sale, it just, you know, ends up a little bit uneven and you all know that. So there's different ways to fix that, one of which is through refunding, another which is through use of cash, and sometimes you might use them both, both tools together. We would help you think about method of sale. You could do a bond issue. I think the likelihood is good that that's what you'll do. But you could also do a bank loan potentially or a DelVal, Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority issuance. Those are other tools. Every tool comes with pros and cons, and we would talk about what those pros and cons are. And then you'd also want to be thinking, whenever you do a deal, you don't want to be just thinking about this moment right now. You also want to be thinking about how do those decisions you make right now impact the decision points you have in the future? So a couple of things that go in that, what does the amortization look like? For example, do you just have completely leveled debt when you're done? Do you build in any debt drop offs for future ones? How, what type of call features will you get? So, and how will that play into any new money timing? So you just want to be thinking, you know, not just about what's happening in this moment, but also thinking to the future. I've said a lot, I'm going to pause there in case you have any questions. And if not, I have like one more page I'd like to talk about.
No comments?
All right. If you could scroll down just a little bit more? Okay. I thought I had another page in there, but that's okay. Just kind of at a high level, what I was going to talk about next is, you know, thinking about in aggregate, how do both steps fit together? You know, you'll just want, when you set out the plan, and, and we love plans. I, today I sent one of my clients, Quaker Town School District, I sent them their 2020 plan. So, you know, whatever you do, you'll want to think about everything holistically. And that's the approach we take. If there's kind of a, to summarize PFM's approach to the financial advisory business, it's we want to develop a long-term relationship with the township so we can best understand your goals and needs. We want to think about things holistically. Kind of make sure we've thought through, you know, not just right now, but also the future. And we want to be here for you as a team so that we're always available to answer questions and that, you know, many heads generally produces, you know, good decision-making. Because if I haven't thought of one thing, Jamie will have thought of it. And if we haven't thought of it, then Garrett would have. Oh yes, this was the page I was looking for. This is just an interest rate chart. This is just an interest rate chart. It's just to show you the rates are very low. And that's your debt summary, where you can see there out there in column eight, that nice little debt jump up that I was referring to. I suspect that one of your goals is to get rid of that.
Melissa, can you review your fee structure, please?
Absolutely. Um, so we proposed kind of two alternatives. The first alternative is if you did a bank loan or DelVal, I mean, they're basically the same. I think we proposed 23.5 fixed fee if the transaction closes. And then for a bond issue, I think we proposed 30,000. And that include, that, that fee is higher because that includes preparation of the official statement, which is like an additional component of work.
Anyone else have any questions for Melissa?
Do not.
Laurie, do you want to turn to Phoenix? Unfortunately, Andre Allen from Phoenix Capital could not be on the call tonight. He did submit his qualifications and also a fee structure. So Andre is who we've worked with for the past two transactions. We have worked with PFM for many transactions in the past, as Melissa had noted. But Andre's firm helped us with the financial analysis and the bond refunding for the wastewater treatment plant sale. So that was a three-year process that we worked through with Andre's firm. And he handled, like I said, the financial analysis of the sale, helping us plan out the, the future debt, uh, general fund expense savings and those sorts of things. And then he also handled in conjunction with Mark Stein and Echid Simons, the refunding of the sewer bonds that we paid off and the debt service ready contract bonds that were paid off with, from the proceeds. He also handled the 2018 taxable bond that we did. That was a result of the, the forensic audit that we had done with the debt service bonds. And we had to switch some of the tax-free bonds into taxable bonds and Andre handled that. So as you can see, was, yes, yes, you can.
The appropriation, yep.
Right, the bonds, yes. So as you can see here, these are Andre's qualifications. He's been around for many years, been in the business for many years. You can see he provided a list there of years of service and the folks that he has serviced over the past. Laurie, is there another page? I can't remember.
Uh, yes. With his fees, did you?
Oh no, not that. No, I just wasn't sure if there was a second page to this. So these are the qualifications that Andre submitted and the folks that he's worked with. The fee structure that Andre has submitted is a flat fee of $20,000 for the transaction.
And Jen, that's strictly looking at a bond, correct? I don't believe they had, I don't think they had the bank, the bank loan option.
He would, both firms would look at whether a bond or a bank loan would be the best viable option. PFM submitted, of course, the two different fees and he only submitted one fee for whatever transaction that we do.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mark or for Melissa or if I could potentially answer anything?
I don't think so. I think that's a good summary, just.
Yep.
So both, both firms actually did submit, this was probably about two months ago when we talked with them about the potential restructuring. And they both did submit kind of their estimates of what we could save. And somebody had asked earlier, net of fees, as Mark had said, that this is of course a moving target all the time. So, you know, this may or may not occur, but we're looking at somewhere in the $500,000 range potentially. It could be higher than that or lower than that, but we're looking at significant savings that we could save over the.
Jen, these rates are the current rates, they're in the like three to four percent range that we currently have, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Yep.
Excellent, thanks. Anyone, any other questions for anyone?
Nope.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Mark. Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Be safe, see ya.
Bye-bye. Good to move on? Go to public comments. Laurie, thank you. Mentioned there are no public comments on agenda items?
That's correct, we do not have any.
Okay, we move to regular approvals, the minutes, August 24th, 2020 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for August 24th, 2020.
Well, second.
It was Greg?
Yeah, I beat Joe by half a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? I just have it. Uh, disbursements, the September 14th, 2020. I'll make a motion to approve the disbursement, September 14th, 2020.
A second.
Any further discussion? Joe and Jen, I think you, Joe, you had some questions?
Yep, just a couple. Jen's going to go over for the community.
Sure. There was a $10,700 bill paid to the Perks County Intermediate Unit, BCIU. This was for our real estate tax bill processing. As everyone is, I think, aware, we, due to the homestead exemption, we had to switch the actual printing that occurs for our tax bills. We used to kind of piggyback on the county's bill. The county could not accommodate the homestead exemption assessment change for us, so we had to find another option. The BCIU printed the bills for us this year. They also print the school district's bills. So this is the tax, this is the bill for the printing of 10,018 bills that were mailed back in April of 2020. Fox Rothschild, we are actually paying two Fox and Rothschild, Fox Rothschild bills this time, the June and the July invoices. Most of the expenses were for write-to-know requests and appeals. There was some expense for the Perkium Avenue project, and then the remainder of it was just general advice, general code questions and also land development issues. There was a $2,200 invoice for Safe City Solutions for police sergeant exams. A few weeks ago, we had six officers test for three future sergeant openings. And I can turn it over to Chief when I'm done here. I think Joe was asking about the actual process. There's one more here for plaster equipment. There was a $2,150 bill and a $200 bill for parts and supplies. The $2,150 invoice was for a turbocharger and muffler for our 2010 loader that is housed at Trout Run. And there was also a $200 invoice for a cutting head for the skid steer sweeper. I of course know no idea what either of those things are, but Larry gave me wonderful answers when I asked him what they were for.
So Larry's getting a turbocharger, huh?
A 2010 loader, figure that out.
Thanks, Jen.
Yep.
Now that he's a road scholar, he needs all that equipment.
That's right.
Very good, thanks, Jen. Thanks, Joe, for the questions. Any further comments or discussion?
I was looking to jump in later about the process.
Oh yeah, good, please, go ahead.
So we had a written test process and oral interview process for three future sergeant vacancies that are going to exist in the, in the department. Myself and the command staff, Lieutenant Harlan, Lieutenant Schaefer interviewed vendors for the written test and we settled on Safe City Solutions. They provided the best product and for the best base for the township. A written test was administered based on Police Department SOPs, criminal law and other reference material that the testing provider provided. Then after that written test, we then had a oral interview process and selected, ranked according to scoring candidates for a promotion.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, too. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have it. Thank you. Unfinished business, monthly golf report. These were, this was posted on the township's website. Jeff or Joe, I don't know if you have any comments?
Yeah, just, just to give some updates as well to the, the rounds of, I got, this is information as of through today from Derek. Rounds are at 18,012 year-to-date compared to 15,649 last year. And again, the, the course was closed for six weeks. Revenue over expenses right now is plus 57,000 year-to-date from the, from the P and L, which we have. September's trending. Rounds are at 1692 versus 1,205 again over last year. Derek was very happy that the Exeter basketball tournament is coming back to the Reading. That's going to be this Friday. So I recommend people do not drive on 422 since I'm playing. There are, there was a lot of watering. Dave and Greg probably can speak to this as well. So they have, we have a little bit of a virus in the, in the fairways. It's called gray leaf spot. I'm learning a little bit about that. They are going to aerate the fairways next week to try to help get rid of that. Just there was too much water and it lies in that low, that low spot. And then the only other thing is Derek was very proud to have his picture taken with LPGA Hall of Famer and Exeter grad, Betsy King. She was back to play for the first time in 10 years. So just a little update and additional information from the golf report.
No, excellent, thanks, Joe. Yeah, looking at the data, it's really nice to be able to look at this, that gray leaf spot, I know, I asked Brian about it, what it was, and he did mention that to me, and he said there's a low-cost way to do it, which he has been taking to try to save as much money as possible. You can fight that with some very expensive chemicals, but he has not chosen to take that route this year. But, you know, with the aerification that was done in August, so the course basically shut down for a week and I think $50,000 of revenue compared to same month last year is pretty darn impressive. So, yeah, really, really good effort by, by those, by the folks over there.
I'd like to add one thing, too, in a conversation with Derek. He shared that there have been a lot of golfers at Reading for the first time. there have been a lot of golfers at Reading for the first time this year ever. You know, and he, he has asked them, why did they come? And it's word of mouth. That's the most common response. So that, I think that bodes well for the future as well.
Yeah, excellent. Now, very good data. It's nice to be able to track this and not keep our fingers crossed till the end of the year.
Yeah, it's a good thing we put this in last year.
Yeah. So, okay, any further comments on that? Okay, let's move to the monthly right to know report, also posted on the township website and thank you, uh, uh, Jeff and Tina for adding in. You know, we have like two outstanding long-term ones. Uh, Jeff, I don't know if you want to comment overall on the right to know requests?
Uh, yes, the report, this is for, um, any submissions that came in during the month of August. Uh, at the last, uh, meeting, the board asked about any outstanding, um, extensions that are still ongoing. There are two currently, uh, that have not been completed, other than what's going on here in August. Both of them are quite extensive. I mentioned the one, uh, the last meeting, it's 4,000 pages of documents. And a second one, um, is also a very significant number of, uh, documents, um, requested, uh, regarding conversations between board members and public, uh, for about a month and a, a year and seven months. So it is very extensive number of pages of emails, uh, that have to be reviewed and any, um, confidential information, uh, personal phone numbers, uh, what, what have you, need to be redacted. Um, so those two are still outstanding, but all the rest, uh, we've been keeping up with them. Um, fairly regular. If you see the, the days on here, five days, three days, four days, uh, for most of the responses. Um, we're getting them out very quickly. Um, and I, I think, uh, Tina is doing a, a very good job on that. Um, going forward, we will, um, note any outstanding, uh, extensions, uh, that we noted at the bottom of the report.
Excellent. Thanks.
Good job, Jeff.
The short, uh, short term, short turnaround, except for, as you say, the very lengthy ones.
Hey, great job, Jeff, to you and the team. Um, I liked the report and it's everything that we need, so keep up the good work there.
One, one question, Jeff, when there is, you know, request of, that requires searching of emails and other things, do we have an IT group do that or we do that internally?
Um, there is a, there is a software program that we, um, that we, uh, put in place and it, it goes through and it reads key words that we give them for the, um, for, you know, for the request. Uh, it pulls them all up and combines them all together. Um, most of these are pretty extensive and unfortunately, because of the amount of things that need to be redacted, it then takes a great amount of time, uh, to go through them all and redact them. Um, these are the kinds of cases where we still, at this point, need to have our, our attorney involved. Um, Tina is working, uh, with Liz's staff, uh, to kind of pare that down a little bit, um, to, um, instruct Tina a little bit more on some of the things that she can do to pick some of the stuff out herself. Um, but unfortunately, when these requests come in, the software, um, will sometimes produce a thousand emails. Um, and, and a lot of them are duplicate because it's conversations that go back and forth between several people. And that could easily add 20 or 30 emails, um, just on one short conversation. So that's why some of these get as long as they do.
Great. Thanks, Jeff. Any other comments from anyone?
I don't know.
Very good. Thanks. Let's move on to new business, uh, discussion on the Series 2015A and 2018 bond refunding and selection of financial advisor. I think it was, yeah, thanks for gathering that and having those presentations. I didn't realize that's a, a significant savings equal to or maybe even more than the impact of COVID it's going to have on our bottom line this year. So it's a pretty timely way to maybe potentially find some money. Um, but Jen, Jeff? Thoughts or?
Well, you've, you've seen the, the presentations. Um, I think you have the information. Um, the, the two proposals are very similar in their abilities. Both have done work, um, with the township. Um, the, the financial, uh, costs charged between the two are, are very close together. Um, I believe, um, one is for 20,000 and the other is for 23,500. So obviously, if we're looking to save more money, we would go with the, the lower proposal. Um, it really comes down to how comfortable the board is working with either of these groups, which the township does have extensive experience with both of them. Our bond council has worked with both of them as well and is, is comfortable working with, with either party. So it's really, it's really just a board decision of which company you'd prefer to go with. We, it's not a, this is professional service, so we don't, do not have to take a firm just simply based on the price.
They're both really good companies, Dave. We've used them in the both in the past and they've both done great work, both Andre and both with PFM. I'm leaning more towards PFM. But that's, again, for what this is entails, I think they're a little bit more robust in their process. And I think for this type of bond refinancing, I just think it's more in their wheelhouse. So I'm, I'm gonna lean towards PFM.
But yeah, it's a small amount compared to the total savings and the fees of either.
And Dave, uh, first of all, full transparency, I, I was part of, on the school board when we made a decision to get away from a company, we were doing direct business with them. And we chose to go in a direction of, as them as a fiduciary. And I can tell you the PFM was, what did happen is then our interest rates did drop. Um, so I will tell you that I've had positive experience with them. I haven't worked with Andre. I did speak to him one time. They made a presentation. And again, very positive, but I will tell you that, um, that the history has been very good. The fact that they do the competitive bids and the way they do it. They were able to really get the, the school district some, uh, some tremendous rates. And we saw, um, we saw really more savings than we initially had seen in the past. Um, their presentation, um, and again, Andre may have sent Jen something, uh, separate that we didn't see, but obviously the presentation, it showed some numbers. The biggest thing for me is the, the leveling, the leveling of the debt in 2025 to 2027. Or right now we have a couple of higher amounts and then a balloon coming due. I think it would be, um, that I would be in favor of the parameters resolution. Uh, and Jen, you can, you can speak to that a little bit better, but where we would save X or Y or Z and what it would be uh, and, and move forward with that. And then hopefully that the rates will continue, everything that, in fact, the Fed, I think, talks tomorrow. Um, I think we'll find out that the rates are going to stay low for quite some time. Similar to John, I probably was at least initially based on these presentations, lean towards PFM, but I'm open to discussing both.
But I can tell you is that what was asked of them was just to provide qualifications and a fee.
Um, unfortunately, and any financial advisor can present you any structuring that they would like and show you maybe something that can't actually be completed. So they can only do what Bond Council approves for them to be able to do under IRS regulations. So what PFM included was a potential for savings, but it may not be what, what actually can happen. So that's why we had only asked, and that's why what was put out on the, the public workspace was just the qualifications. Because it's really about who are you most comfortable with and who has the fee that you're more comfortable with. They're going to go through the same exact process and they're going to come up with the same exact answer. They're going to come up with the most savings under what the bond council allows. So it's not really going to be based upon who can save us more money. It's just who are you more comfortable working with and which fee are you more comfortable paying?
Do you, Jen, do you have a preference?
Um, I've worked, I only worked with Jamie for a small period of time. He was doing, I, I don't think he actually did any transactions while I was here and while we were using him. Um, and we kind of passed in the wind. He's always been helpful to me. Jamie's always been very helpful. I, of course, do have, uh, you know, interactions with Andre. I worked for many, like I said, many years through the wastewater sale with him and then the 2018 bond. So I'm very comfortable with Andre only because we've worked together for the past four years. But like I said, Jamie's always been very, uh, very helpful. Um, I've had to reach out to him for a couple of issues, um, over the past couple of years, and he's always very helpful and very responsive as well. So it, it, I don't think you can go wrong either way.
Yeah. Greg, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, Joe, you said it was very positive with PFM, correct? With the school district?
Yeah, it, it was for us, yeah. And then recently they had a big transaction, which they, you can look into it, but they, and they want the bank, bank loan route with them.
I, I think the other thing that speaks positively about them is with their team approach, they were able to have someone here tonight. Um, and I don't, I don't think you can overlook that either.
Slightly off the subject, Jen, but do we know what the legal fee is from, uh, Eckhart Siemens?
I do not have the, that information right now, no.
Okay. Yeah, but they've done for us before and I think it was reasonable. Okay, I'm, I'm okay either way. I didn't know, Michelle.
Michelle, what do you think?
Or if you want to just, so I'm, I'm.
Michelle, what do you think?
I am. I've worked with both and, um, I work with Jamie more. And, uh, it, it's, they're both good. I think what the board feels comfortable with.
Yeah, like we said, they, they're both phenomenal work and good experience with the township in, in the past, so we can't go wrong with it. But I'm going to make a motion to appoint PFM.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, um, we needed to, something that Mark brought up, do we need to make a motion to prepare a parameters ordinance?
That will happen. Mark will guide us through that. That needs to happen in October. So he was just kind of, I wanted him to lay out the timeline of how this whole transaction will work. And just to let you know that this is not the first thing we're going to be coming to you about. So this is step one in a 10-step process here. Uh, this is gets us started and then we get, we have to get through, uh, selecting an investment banker. And then there will be an ordinance that gets passed in the October-ish timeframe, he said, so that we can get this, um, the first refunding done, as he had said, and we can get one done in 2020 so that we stay under our, uh, bank qualified tax refinancing. And then we can do the second one. Cause the second bond actually can't be called until, uh, February of 2021. So that one gets pushed to 2021.
Okay, thanks, Jen.
Okay, Jen, um, the Series 2016, that's August of next year. That's the earliest we could do anything with that. Is that correct?
Um, hold on, I have to pull. Is that what? You're looking at the debt summary?
Yeah, I am. Sorry about that.
Right. Let me pull this up here. Hold on. Uh, Series 2016, correct. The first call date is August 2021, right?
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I, we would have to, like I said, they brought to us just these, the 2015A and the 2018 that are the most viable ones to do right now. So that could be a question we could talk to them about later next year. Um, or it might have to get pushed to 2022 because there is that limit of how much debt, I think it's $10 million you can issue in a single year to keep under the bank qualified for the tax refinancing, which gets you the better rate. So.
Right. And, and just the last question then, um, the 2007, that's money that we paid, but we'll reimburse that, correct, Jen?
The 2007 is the old sewer bond?
Right.
Oh, no, no, you're.
That, that, that's the, uh, the lease rental?
That's the TIF, correct. That's for Exeter Commons. So we pay that, but basically we utilize the tax, real estate tax payments from the Exeter Commons property to pay that. And we're in that TIF with the county and the school district.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you. I appreciate all the work you did on this. Thank you.
I think I would like a list, uh, because it's, it's a good time to refinance, but we don't want to go crazy with it. Of all the outstanding, um, bonds that we have, our notes so that we can start looking to the future, uh, as you were talking about, and see what, what's ahead so we can sort of plan for it.
You're looking a list, for a list of the outstanding debt? That's kind of what they had in their presentation there. I can email everyone a copy of that.
Then we can start calling them back so that we can look and, and maybe do some planning.
Right. I have a list of outstanding debt. It shows you debt service requirements by fiscal year. And then on there, which is what Joe was referencing, there's a call date on there of when it can be called and the fund that it is paid out of. Um, all the debt that we currently have outstanding is actually in the debt service fund, so it's not being paid out of the general fund. It's being paid out of the special tax, the debt service tax that we have. And then we have one last payment to be made on the last sewer bond, which was not callable when we did the sewer transaction. That's being paid out of the wastewater proceeds account.
Okay.
But I can send, email everyone on the board a copy of all of our, our debt summary.
Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right, move on. Item number two under new business, consider adopting ordinance allowing the collection of attorney fees for delinquent accounts and liens. Jeff, do you want to?
Uh, yeah, this, this ordinance, um, basically puts into place our ability to, when we are satisfying liens uh, and put placing liens, um, on various properties, uh, to be able to include all the, um, proper attorney fees in there. Um, otherwise the township is footing that bill. Um, this way, we're not, we're not paying for, uh, the attorney fees. This is being paid for um, as part of the collection process. Uh, this formalizes it and, uh, the schedule is based on the dollar amount uh, that we've, um, determined with, uh, with Liz and her firm, um, on the various fees that they charge uh, to, to do these, uh, various tasks, uh, with the court.
Right. When we looked at your ordinances, uh, you did not have this on the books and you need this to um, have it enacted in order to collect the attorney fees so that you're not out, you know, footing that bill.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks to Liz. Uh, I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance allowing for the collection of attorney fees for delinquent accounts and liens. What's that? John, did you get it in there?
No, I think it was Joe or Greg or Michelle.
It was Joe.
It was Ray.
Michelle.
Yeah, Michelle. Very good. Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item number three under new business, variance request for 1241 Dolphin Place.
Good evening. Um, so the township zoning ordinance allows for the planning commission and, uh, and or the board supervisors to comment on any applications that are before the zoning hearing board. That's why, uh, the next three items, um, the township, uh, board of supervisors can, can, they do have the ability to comment if they would like. 1241 Dolphin Place, this application has been loaded to the board's workspace. The property owner had begun construction on, of a deck that was actually, uh, in the front yard setback along Claire Drive. This property is at the corner of Dolphin Place and Claire Drive, uh, just off of Fairview Chapel Road. The applicant, in order to receive a building permit, will require, um, zoning relief for that structure to be located in the front yard setback. There was a site plan, uh, I believe on page seven of that packet. And, um, the, the planning commission had heard this, uh, applicant, uh, during their August meeting recommended that the zoning, zoning hearing board deny the application. If there's any other questions or any other clarification I can provide to the board, um, that's not within the packet, I would be happy to do so.
Well, the reason for denial, is it just infringing with the neighbor or what the?
They, they believe it didn't prove a hardship, uh, that there were other locations on the property that the applicant could place a deck. There are, uh, pictures at the end of that application packet that does show a, kind of a driveway there, and they thought that the applicant could place the deck there.
So we'll just, uh, re, I think you, you stated, so the planning commission has recommended to the zoning board that they deny them?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And typically we've taken a position of no comment unless someone has a very strong opinion and let the planning commission and zoning work it out?
Yep.
Yeah, we just stay neutral, let the process play out?
Any comments from anyone? Or if there's someone who make a, you know, I'm, I'm fine with a no comment as they've, they've been reviewing these.
Yeah.
Me too.
Yeah, just no comment, Will, as we usually do.
Okay.
Very good.
That's fine.
Wanna talk about the second one, Will?
Yes, uh, 108 Kenneth Place. Uh, the property owner is looking to construct a detached garage, a 32 by 24-foot detached garage at the end of their driveway. They do not meet the side yard setback, which is 10 feet, uh, for an accessory structure. They propose to locate the structure, um, five feet from the property line instead of the 10. And, uh, they provided pictures as well as a site plan in the packet. Um, they have received, um, I guess, condition acceptance letters from their neighbors that nobody really objected to it. And the planning commission had heard this application during the August meeting as well and, uh, recommended that the zoning hearing board, uh, approve or grant, um, the zoning relief.
Thanks, Will. Um, again, yeah, if it goes neutral, I mean, I respect their opinion. Anyone else, any strong opinions?
Same.
Okay, move on, Will. Not the next one. 4873 Perkyomen Avenue.
Yep. So the last one is 80, uh, 4873 Perkyomen Avenue. This is the, um, it's a commercial business. It's actually the Salon Expressions, um, behind, behind the Turkey Hill there, uh, right on the corner. Um, essentially what the property owner is looking to do is, is to place a few more parking spots for, um, his staff. Uh, he has kind of run out of parking. Um, he is proposing to extend the driveway along the side of the building, which is adjacent to the mobile home community. Um, with that proposed driveway extension, uh, there is a setback requirement of five feet. And he, he can only provide two, um, two-foot setback.
And the recommendation on that?
From?
The.
Planning Commission?
I'm sorry, the zoning, uh, the planning commission did hear that and they, um, gave a recommendation to approve or grant the two-foot, um, request.
Good, thank you. Uh, anyone, any strong opinion?
I have some concerns about, you have the entrance to go into the trail art park. You have the, it used to be the water place. I don't know, is it's a dentist now or what? And then Turkey Hill. And, uh, you have a lot of people, uh, ingress and, and ingress. And, uh, it just gets a little, people just fly in and out of there.
Yeah, my, go ahead, Michelle.
That's, that, that's my concern. I don't want more accidents there.
Yeah, Jeff, I think you looked at it, Will, you probably looked at it. I went down and, and actually looked at it. And I think they're looking for just the employees to get out of their parking lot so they allow customers to park so it isn't so crowded.
Yeah, that's correct. They, they will actually be, uh, essentially stacking the employee cars on top of each other. I think they'll be three or four deep there on the side of the house. Um, originally the property owner was proposing to put a parking lot, um, against, on, on the, uh, the Moss roadside. And the zoning hearing board, uh, was not really favorable to that. So this was, um, kind of a mediation.
Okay, thanks, Will. Yeah, so Michelle, you seem to, I don't know, anyone else have any strong opinions? I think it's been reviewed a few times on this one. I'm fine, certainly myself to say neutral.
Yeah, neutral.
Me too.
Yeah, neutral.
Okay, so we can, we're okay to move on?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Will. Item number six, consider, consider resolution approving traffic signal modification at Perkyomen Avenue, Route 422 and 36th Street. I got three of these. I think we discussed these all. And this is just the, the official resolution to move forward. Is that right, Jeff?
Yes, um, all three of these are, um, resolutions. They're very similar. Um, it's basically, they're not new traffic signals. Uh, this authorizes, uh, ongoing maintenance, uh, types of repairs that can be scheduled at these three locations. Um, it's standard, um, procedure when, when lights are upgraded like this, uh, through PennDOT, uh, that the board does a resolution, uh, authorizing this type of work to be done. Um, if you wanna do, you know, do all three resolutions individually, um, just to make it official. Um, but they are all pretty much identical. These are three lights in a row, um, all with the same type of standard language of repairs that could potentially be done at these locations. And this is all part of the, the upgrade on, on the Perkyomen, Perkyomen Avenue, um, upgraded the whole area as it's being redone. This is, this is part of that process.
Great. Thanks, Jeff. So we need motions on each of these. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the traffic signal modifications at Perkyomen Avenue, Route 422 and 36th Street.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
I'll make a motion, consider a resolution approving the traffic signal modifications at Perkyomen Avenue, Route 422 and East Never Sink Road.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving the traffic signal modifications at Perkyomen Avenue, Route 422 and 37th Street. Is that Joe?
Yeah.
Who's Joe?
I think he got in just ahead there. Very good. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item number nine, under new business, consider adopting resolution recognizing the 2021 minimum municipal obligation funding requirements for the Exeter Township Police Pension Plan, Exeter Township Non-Uniform Pension Plan, and the Exeter Township Teamsters Pension Plan. Jeff or Jen, if you wanna maybe explain?
Jen, you wanna jump in on this one, Jen?
Sure. Uh, this is the annual resolution that needs to be passed for the minimum municipal obligation for the pension plans. Um, we work with Conrad Segal, our actuary on the plans to determine what we are required to put into each plan based upon annual salaries and the actuarial assumptions. Um, what needs to go into each plan each year to fund the plan. Um, so this just needs to be, uh, a resolution that's kind of a housekeeping item that needs to go through each year. Um, I will tell you, um, I know we made some significant contributions from the wastewater plant sale into both the police pension fund and the employees pension fund to cover some unfunded liabilities. The impact of those deposits, they were only made at the end of last year, is not, uh, felt, we'll say, in the, in this, um, the MMO for 2021. Uh, they only do evaluation of the pension plans every two years and our last valuation was done for January 1st, 2019. So the, and the, the actuarial assumptions for the next two years are based upon that review. So that review does not include those deposits, basically. So this MMO does not include those deposits. So we will realize those savings in 2022 and forward after we have, um, a new valuation done for the pension plans, which will occur on January 1st, 2021. Um, the plan and why we made those deposits into those pension plans was to get rid of the unfunded liability and that, uh, the MMO would be low enough that what we get from the state, from the state aid would cover our MMO each year. And then we would not have to supplement the rest with general fund dollars.
Great, thanks, Jen.
So you can do all these in one? Jeff?
Yeah, it's one resolution.
Okay. I move that we adopt the resolution recognizing 2021 minimum municipal obligation funding requirements for the Exeter Township Police Pension Plan, the Exeter Township Non-Uniform Pension Plan, and the Exeter Township Teamsters Pension Plan.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thanks, Jen, for the good explanation. Um, item number 10, new business, authorize the sale of the following equipment on municipal bid. Larry gonna cover this or Jeff?
Sure, I can.
Go ahead, Larry.
Uh, we have a 96 Ford F-350 that used to be the old traffic truck for police. Um, we have a lot of rust issues at the radiator support, that the radiator is actually resting on the frame right now. We have a, a 2004 Ford F-150, uh, that used to be the emergency management truck slash fire marshal truck that we have in the police department now that could, uh, pull the trailer that that truck used to pull. So we'll put that in place that eliminate the, this truck here. The 2004 Batco, the John Deere Batco is actually over at the country club. Uh, we did ask for approval for this one. We did buy the 2020 Caterpillar. I just wanted to bring it back up since I put a whole list of everything that we're trying to sell. The 1975 utility trailer is something that we, uh, use a lot. Uh, but unfortunately, it's falling apart due to age. And we are going to replace that with a 2020 utility trailer that is on the budget for this year to purchase. The 2005 Ford F-250 was the one we talked about when we bought the Ranger. Uh, with municipal bid, we're gonna put that on there. I know we agreed on selling that before. Uh, the propane generator was in the Ammons Building. Uh, we never used it. We don't even know if it runs when we took over the Ammons Building. However, when we got a, uh, diesel generator from the sewer plant, after the sale of the sewer plant, we put that in place that we used a few times already with power outages. It's working very well, so there's no sense of even keeping the propane one here.
Thanks, Larry. So you just need, you need a motion to authorize the sale of these items?
Yes.
I made that motion.
Okay.
That was John.
I got a second, yep.
All, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Item number 11, uh, under new business, consider awarding the bid for the Butter Lane Culvert Replacement Project.
We, uh, we advertised the, uh, project back in August for the replacement of the Butter Lane Culvert. Um, this is, uh, an existing structure that's been failing. And we also had a pre-bid meeting on August 26th for the projects. We received four prospective bidders that picked up contract specifications. However, we only received two bids, which we opened on September 10th. Uh, the two bids were from CMS Construction Company for an amount of $382,255.25. And the low bid is from H&amp;K Group Incorporated for a total amount of $349,258.80. Based on our review of the documents, the bid proposal, the bid bonds, and the supporting, uh, non collusion affidavit and, um, bitter sworn qualification statements, we're recommending to the board to consider awarding the contract to H&amp;K Group for a total amount of $349,258.80. Our original estimate, estimate was around $411,000, so it did come in under our estimate, so we're pleased with the prices. And, um, uh, the contractor is responsible. We've used them before in the past. So, uh, we feel comfortable recommending to the board of supervisors to award the contract.
Thanks, Jeff.
Did you say H&amp;K?
Yes. It's, it's probably gonna be Landis Deck and Sons. They typically, when they bid, they bid under the roof of H&amp;K Group because they're a subsidiary of the company. Uh, but however, most likely it'll be the Landis Deck, uh, and Sons, uh, as part of the H&amp;K Group that'll be doing the, the, uh, actual work.
So the, so the motion can be H&amp;K and if it's a different name, we're okay?
Yes. Um, I'll, it would, typically the bonds will be in the H&amp;K Group and, once we receive those bonds, I'll forward those uh, to the solicitor, uh, for their review as well, for legal content. Um, but yes, the award would go to the H&amp;K Group, uh, for that total of $349,258.80.
Okay. Well, I'll move, we award the bid for the Butter Lane Culvert Replacement Project to the H&amp;K Group, uh, an amount at $349,258.50?
Uh, 80 cents.
80 cents. Yeah, leave on writing.
I'll second that. For Greg.
That was Greg?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Um, aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Department report. Joe, do you wanna keep going?
Sure, I just have one item. Um, was contacted by the PUC, uh, William Senek to inform us that he, he sent, he will be, and he actually has sent a document to, um, to the township as well as the, um, participants that were involved in Norfolk Southern, uh, culvert, uh, improvements that have been completed this year. Document was dated September 4th, 2020. It's to advise all parties that a final inspection will be conducted on Wednesday, uh, this Wednesday, September 16th at 1:15 at the site. Uh, the purpose of the meeting is to, uh, for the PUC to, uh, review and inspect the completed work and to make sure that all parties that were part of, of this involvement are satisfied. I will be in attendance, uh, at that meeting since I also was summoned by the PUC. Um, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Great, thanks, Jeff.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Michelle, oh, you said thanks?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Uh, Chief?
I guess, uh, a couple of things here. Uh, for the last eight weeks, the department, uh, has been utilizing federal grant money in an effort to, uh, combat aggressive driving. Um, the police department has partnered with, uh, the state police and other local departments. And, uh, we've been very successful, uh, over the last eight weeks. Um, we've had, uh, issued, uh, 664 citations during that period. Uh, 319 were for speed. Um, we got a few citations in excess of 100, uh, miles per hour. Um, we made 16 DUI arrests and, uh, issued another 296 warnings, uh, during the same time period. So I couldn't be, uh, more proud of the effort of the, uh, guys, uh, that did a fantastic, uh, uh, job during the enforcement period. Um, just a reminder out there, um, to help keep children safe, the police, the police department here is participating in the, uh, National Child Passenger Safety Week. Um, it starts tomorrow and ends, uh, September 21st. Um, nearly half of all car seats are installed correctly, um, which means children may not be traveling as safely as possible. Um, the police department has two trained, uh, safety seat technicians, um, available to assist, uh, residents ensuring that their child's safety seats are installed correctly. So if, uh, any residents that are out there, uh, want to, uh, you know, need police assistance and ensuring their safety seat, uh, is properly installed, we ask they call the police department or email us and we'll have a, uh, safety seat technician, uh, reached out to them and assist them. That's it.
Great, thanks, Chief. Um, Liz? Um, Liz? I think you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I don't have anything to report at this time. Unless you have any questions for me.
Not for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clarence?
Yes, uh, last uh couple of weeks, I'm continuing. We've been, we're still cleaning out these systems that are around the township. Um, there's, we have quite a few of them. I think there's 10 of them. But it's 14 altogether, but the 10 of them, no, that have tanks and the others are are in the ponds. But um, they're extremely uh bad. They're, it's become quite obvious that they haven't been cleaned in quite a while, so that's uh become quite a little project. Uh, they were there all last week and it's probably going to be another, probably at least another week or so, maybe two weeks till we get get them all sucked out with the vac truck. Um, also, we're working on sidewalk down at uh Warming Ridge Park. Uh, they put in uh one of a hundred feet of sidewalk, replaced some that was just in bad shape. And then continued, if if anybody is familiar with down there, there was a a short section that was over 100 feet that was sidewalk stop that did not finish going to the park. So we're finishing that and we're also going to put in some curving there also as well. And down the trial run, uh, we're trying to uh fix up the trail where where hooks up from the trial run depository down to the actual trail itself. So that's what they've been doing. And we're also getting uh the leaf loaders ready for this fall, so that's about it.
Yeah, it looks like they're coming down early.
Yeah, we're not going to pick them early though. Don't get any ideas.
Yeah. Thanks, Clarence.
Yep.
Uh, Jeff?
Uh, just a, an update on the feasibility study. Uh, last week, KCBA Architects um visited the township complex. Um, the this visit was to go through the infrastructure um and look at the actual physical shape of the building and all the mechanical systems. Um, they they did that, walked through the entire uh facility. Um, and then they went up, uh, we were going to take a look at just the the site, the promenade site. But uh, the weather was pretty bad, so we skipped that to another day. And we then met with both of the um, with the fire department at both locations, at Refton and Stonersville, and took a tour of both of the fire facilities there. Um, they will be returning next week um to go over the the uh, continue the process. But they're going to be looking at it from the programming standpoint, where they're going to meet with each of the departments um and discuss their program needs, what they'd like to to see potentially going forward. Um, once they they get that all together um and do a a site survey of the promenade site, um, they're going to be starting to put together the final report on the feasibility of what they feel we should do in terms of a new complex. If we should attempt to do something at the existing site or move ahead and and plan for going to the promenade site. Uh, so they're uh, they they got quite a bit of work. Our our staff has been working well with them. Um, these guys, I think, I think Clarence um did a great job with them walking them around. And I think he said they took about, between the the three of them, I think they probably took about 600 pictures on their cell phones.
Yeah.
And they wrote down everything and anything that everyone said, so they're being very thorough. Uh, we spent about um good, a little over two hours um with the Jeff, with the folks from the fire department um at the two different locations and got a pretty extensive tour of the facilities at both of those locations. So um, things are moving ahead. Um, just one other item, and it was mentioned partially joking, but um, we have been getting a lot of phone calls um regarding what is the township planning on doing for trick or treat? Um, so we're going to look at what the other municipalities are doing, what guidelines the state is putting out there or not putting out there. And we will have that uh for a discussion item at the next board meeting. And uh, we will also be discussing the township's recycling program as a discussion item. That's all.
Excellent. Thanks, Jeff. Uh, how about comments? Not agenda items. Very good. Thanks, Laurie. Supervisor reports. Uh, Michelle?
I have, um, one. I keep getting phone calls about the flag down at the library. It's tattered. And um, people like to see it replaced. So if that can be taken care of, we would appreciate it.
What what was that, Michelle?
The flag. Down at the library is is.
Flag pole. Okay.
So if we let that fixed, it'll make uh quite a few people happy.
Yep.
And um, I believe that's all I have for tonight. Uh, uh, any thought, one more, any thoughts being given to open the meetings up to the public yet?
Jeff, I know you've been looking at options and watching what other townships are doing and following PSATs what they're recommending.
Yeah, or the the problem is still the the number of people in a public location. Um, that's still an issue. Uh, I believe the disaster declaration is still in place. Um, so at at this point, you know, we will continue looking at it, but um, you know, at this point, um, it it doesn't look real promising quite yet. Um, you know, the, it it's, again, it's always a moving target um from one week to the next of what is going on with the state in terms of um, you know, what we can and can't do. I know there was a court decision that just came down today that we'll have to look at a little closely. Um, that kind of overruled uh the governor's office on um shutting down certain aspects of the state. Um, I don't know how that would affect this particular issue. So we're hoping by next meeting we can maybe come up with a game plan. But again, we're still limited um in terms of how many people that we could try and get into our public meeting space and still practice any type of uh isolation distance.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
John? I just have three things, but Jeff answered two of them. Recycling and Halloween, we're going to talk about at the next meeting, because there's a lot of uh noise out there on Halloween, so just, you know, we have a good plan. I'm sure Laurie and Jeff will put together good recommendations from the research that they do. And then Jeff, a question for you. Remember you were looking at that Service Electric? That like memo out, is that still on target for this month?
Um, Laurie and I have been working on, we put some information out on the website for people to, um, if they have any questions regarding it. Um, uh, you know, we we put together a a question and answer, uh, frequently asked questions about the uh about the cable franchise agreements. And um, I I, and Laurie, maybe you can chime in on that if you've gotten any response from anyone in the public yet uh about that information?
We didn't publish that quite yet on the website. We put out, um, we we put it out in the most recent electronic newsletter.
Okay.
We were going to be seeking inquiries on that. Our plan is to put out the FAQ document and then solicit questions that aren't answered in that document from the public. And then our intent is to answer those and and put that out. Um, we think that based on the last town hall meeting that we had, that a lot of the questions that were brought up then can be handled that way. Uh, I think that there were just a little bit of uh misunderstanding about what the purpose of the cable franchise agreement is. So I think that we can handle those inquiries, but just to make sure that we're answering the questions that people have.
Makes sense. And then I think we just need to approve it as as a board then, probably sooner rather than later. Because we we could be losing out on some revenue.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's another revenue stream, but you don't want to.
Thanks. That's all I have, Dave. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Uh, Greg?
Uh, just comp uh compliment Laurie on the uh electronic newsletter from uh I thought it was very comprehensive. There's a lot of information there and I just looking forward to, you said, regards will be out soon. Looking forward to getting more people signed up because there is a lot of valuable information.
Thanks, Greg. Uh, Joe?
Yeah, just uh one thing. Uh, I wasn't able to join the Zoom call because I didn't get the invite. But uh, but Jeff and uh the new superintendent at the school district uh did have a nice conversation, getting to know each other. Um, just more of introductions and see how we can work together down the road, so. Um, I don't know if Jeff, if you have any comments on that, but that that was the extent of it for me.
Hi, we did have a good conversation with the um, the superintendent and a board member. Um, they are, I believe, bringing a new um business agent or business manager on staff there shortly. Um, so I think that's going to help them make some changes there. Uh, we did uh make some suggestions of how we can continue um ongoing discussions with the school district uh to, just to make them aware of things that that come up that we know about. Uh, future land development projects that might impact the school in terms of number of children. Um, things that uh could impact tax revenues. So uh, I think we kind of opened up the 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 door a little bit there. Um, and we did discuss uh some issues, again, related to the community park. And they're going to be uh have their um facilities committee take another look at it. Um, but I think they're kind of in agreement with us on how we would probably like to proceed with um dealing with the park um at least through the the term of um the remainder term or the lease that the township would um still maintain the area. But most likely, we would be able to remove a lot of the improvements that were there um that are in disrepair um and just keep it as uh open space and uh maintain the basketball court, which is currently part of the township's leased area. So um, we are, you know, in in good contact with them. It looks like we're going to have um uh meetings maybe every quarter with them on an ongoing basis. Uh, more if needed, but at least uh be in contact with them uh just to share insight and information back and forth.
Thanks, Jeff.
Great. Is that it, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. And yeah, just wrapping up, just to echo uh what Greg said, I mean, the, I've got, heard a lot of positive comments on the timeliness of the electronic newsletter. Very readable, quick snapshot of what's going on. You can refer to get more information if you want it. Um, I'm sure it's, again, saving money, so I think that's gone great, so congrats on that and thanks. And Jen, yeah, thanks for, you know, this background work, I know pulling together, you know, these bond series and everything else, but you know, finding ways to save money is is really important. So thanks for the, you know, very good explanation on that. And um, yeah, and Will and Larry, everything for the explanations on the agenda, so, no, thanks, everyone, and that's all I have.
Just one question, Dave. Is that on the, or Laurie, is that on the website too, the newsletter?
Yes.
Thanks. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Thanks. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a, have a great night.
Good night, everybody.
Night. Good night.